Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for joining us this evening for this Wednesday, August 19th Hampton City School Board Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ms. Powers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here. Let the minutes show that all board members are present for the meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Cherry and seconded by Mr. Samuels. Is there any discussion? Ms. Powers, would you please call or vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels? Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye. Motion passes. Next thing on the agenda is our consent. And item number 2.02, minutes of the school board meeting of August 5th. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Let's see, I have a motion from Ms. Banks Gray and who was the second?
Cherry.
Ms. Cherry made the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Powers, you call the roll.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, the motion passes. That now brings us to superintendent staff reports. We have two items on the agenda this evening, so I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this evening. Updates relating to the school plan. As you know, a document is only as good as its implementation. Information technology, organizational development, information and professional learning, and conclude with an overview, professional development for school and central office administrators. This evening, the presentation will begin with Nurse Gloria.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, boy. So as I return to plan, oops. We're going to discuss the operations and support, our supplies, materials, and training updates. Next slide, please. Presently, we have ordered. You can list these as well. Everything has arrived in this list, obviously, except for the face, the cloth face masks for each student. Well, they'll be receiving one per each student that has not arrived. And then on the next, this one, oops. And then the next slide, we're waiting on 15,000 dust shields for schools. It should be on August 24th, but the rest of our requirements for PPE and disinfectant and cleaning have arrived, including even the electrostatic sprayers. Next slide, please. For nursing-wise, all nurses will be receiving training on August 20th and through the 25th. We had seven new nurses, so it did require some extra training for, obviously, the COVID situation. They'll be training all of the staff during the pre-service times with the, as the principals set that up. And then administrators received training. They were supposed to receive training on, in August for the COVID-related information, but since the storm came through, we presented, I sent everyone the presentation that I was going to present on, sent it to them via email. And so have not received any questions from my presentation, so that was good. Next slide. Signage-wise, our print shop and graphics shop have been phenomenal in getting signage put up and ready. We have the physical distancing floor stickers, the arrows for floor stickers for schools for directions, classroom posters of the COVID symptoms, as well as welcome visitor posters, updating. We did have some up for during the summertime, and now we're doing it for all visit, you know, for entrance into there for the rest of the school year. And that we have signage for requiring face masks, physical distancing, and hand sanitizing posters as well that will be delivered to the schools by August 24th. So they'll be receiving those. Next slide. And these are the two signages that you'll see that are new. The one on the left to you is the guidelines for entering schools, and it talks about the different requirements and as well as the symptoms that you need to look at before you can enter the school. So any visitors coming in, as well as the second sign, and that's just to reinforce that they have to wear a mask. They should be keeping the six feet distance and to use hand sanitizer while in the building. So the signages are excellent. And then just a reminder that these were the posters that we placed in each of the classrooms. Obviously, the one on the right, the elementary one, is for elementary schools, a little younger in appearance. And then on the secondary side, secondary schools will receive this one on the left that's a little more, you know, mature looking, but it all still addresses the issues related to COVID. Next slide. And these are the floor sticker signages that we had talked about. And so they'll be, like I said, on the 24th, will be sent to the schools. Very professional-looking, very, very good job. And that's my side. That's all I have to present. Thank you.
Thank you, Nurse Gil. Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board, Dr. Smith, John Caggianno here, Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Just a couple of slides, updates on information technology, supplies, and materials that have been purchased. As you all are well aware, with the division's longstanding one-to-one program, digital learning program, we were well-positioned last year with devices already, one-to-one in grades five through 12. So using CARES Act funds again to expand the digital learning program to grades pre-K through 12. And so a few things about this slide, you see the first row there, 6,600 Chromebooks and cases. We have received those already, so those will look to distribute in grades pre-K through five. Again, fifth graders through 11th graders, last year, we did not collect their devices, so they were able to take those home during the summer. So with the understanding, new students and the distribution process in place for sixth graders through 12th graders this year. So that first row there, speaking to new devices for pre-K through five. For some of the computers, as you look at the second row there, 3,420, we have what are known as legacy computers, so they're just about at their lifespan. And we have, obviously, behind the scenes, doing some things with refresh cycles and cycling in and out new computers. So we have a couple of cycles that were up for refresh this year. That third row there, students in grades six through nine, they'll return to school with their current Chromebooks. However, there'll be an opportunity for an upgrade if they would like the chance to turn theirs in when those new ones arrive October 5th. And so that's just to replace. Back to that 3,420, those legacy machines I mentioned, we have a new delivery coming in of new machines September 15th. So again, those are older devices we'll be distributing initially for the first couple of weeks of school. However, those new devices will be in September 15th. So certainly, they work just fine. It's just a matter of they were on our three-year refresh cycle. And as it indicates below the table there, some of the information I shared, iPads will be made available to pre-K students so that they can connect with teachers via Zoom again until that next shipment of Chromebook comes in on September 15th. Couple of other slides and references to technology equipment. Now, at the secondary level, you can imagine in a mathematics classroom, the need for writing on a board, whether that's a dry erase board or a chalkboard. And so to facilitate the teaching and learning process, and secondary math classrooms, classrooms in particular, we're looking at the purchase of 165 tablets. And so these will be here by September 15th. So a tablet is really nothing more than a tablet that's connected via a wire to my laptop. And then what I'm able to do is using a writing utensil, writing on that tablet. And then what I see on the user end, the student's machine, be as if I'm looking at a teacher write on a chalkboard or a dry erase board, a whiteboard, what have you. And so that will be an opportunity to enhance the instruction. As it's notes below, we don't need those to begin the school year, but it will be nice to have them in September when they arrive. So those are for secondary math classrooms. We've purchased two different sets of cameras for career and technical education teachers, as well as fine arts teachers. The first shipment arrives October 24th, I'm sorry, August 24th. The second one expected September 20th. So what's the difference between the two? The second one is a little more of a higher-end, the 50 Logitech C922s. They move at a 60 frames per second, and so depending on the course, we have the need for a little bit of a higher-quality camera. And so again, that will be an opportunity to enhance the virtual teaching and learning environment. We expect those to be delivered by September 20th. So a quick update, let me go out for a second, and actually, I'll stay here for a second. So the MiFi's, we have a variety of different buckets where we're purchasing or securing through grant funds, MiFi's. And as you all know, we're in the midst of a survey with our families, and so we're looking for 100% response rate. Of our approximately 19,000 students so far, a little over 9,600 have responded to that survey. One of the questions, as you're well aware, board members, we ask in that survey is, "Do you have access to high-speed internet?" Thus far, 97% of those survey responses who've come back have indicated they do have access to high-speed internet. So we have 3% of the current survey respondents, which represents 247 students, a combination of 198 families who currently do not have internet access. So we met with building principals today at the elementary level, Dr. Hanes, Dr. Owens, and myself in the middle school level, and tomorrow we'll meet with the high school principals. This morning, they received an update regarding those families who have not yet submitted the survey. And so we have staff busy on phones calling because that is critical information. So what we're doing with that information, staff members on the technology side are reaching out, for example, to those 198 families to talk about the process. And so for those for the viewing audience, I'm going to escape just for a second the presentation and go to our division's homepage. On our division's homepage, if you know of a family, or perhaps you're viewing and you don't have internet access, but you know of a family who does not, if you go to our return to school plan here and scroll down just a little bit, right at the top there, it says, this icon here, "Need internet access." So all a family has to do, and we've been communicating this via our public relations department, is contact this number here to get in touch with someone who can facilitate that process to secure internet, particularly through that Connect to Compete program. So if it's, if it's not through the Connect to Compete program, and some families may not be eligible, then we do have these MiFi's that we can, we can work with families to distribute on an as-needed basis. At this point, I'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Ms. Heather Peterson, who will share with the board an update regarding some of the training that's taking place in professional learning for both teachers and administrators in the area of climate and culture.
Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board, and Dr. Smith. I'm Heather Peterson. I'm the Director of Climate and Culture for Hampton City Schools. It's my pleasure to give you an update of what we've been doing to support learning in the areas of climate and culture for this summer. So the first slide we're going to take a peek at is going to show you the focus for a lot of the professional learning this summer has been indeed on social-emotional learning. Over the past four and a half months, looking at research and what would be a primary priority as we think about re-engagement for learning, after more than 25 weeks of students not being in a face-to-face learning environment, social-emotional skills is what rose to the top. So we created two different 60-minute sessions that we offered in a virtual space. The first one being transitioning back to learning, the implications for social-emotional learning. This is where we really unpacked the implications of trauma that students and adults may have experienced during this time of school closure, and that helping folks to realize that while we were all in the same storm, that each of us are in very different boats, and that we have to be very careful in assuming what people's experiences were during this time. So we really promoted how important self-awareness and self-management are going to be, both for adults as well as students. The other component that we really emphasized to our participants in these sessions is how important it is going to be for adults to have practices of self-care so that they can then make sure that they're able to support our students. We offered 10 sessions of this particular PD, and we had 247 participants for that session. The second one there is social-emotional learning, just strategies for sheer connection. As soon as we knew we were shifting into a full virtual return, we knew it was going to be imperative for teachers to understand and support people how they can still seamlessly use social-emotional strategies in a virtual space. So we talked about how they could do different strategies that they could use throughout the day, and again, thinking about when we want to promote all five of those competencies of self-management, self-awareness, particularly during this time, how important social awareness is going to be. Not only were we dealing with the pandemic, but also over the several months of everything that was going on with racial injustices and social movements, that that certainly was going to be on the mind and in our learning spaces for both adults and students. So you can see here, we facilitated nine sessions of this particular professional learning opportunity and had 222 participants. It's a great number, isn't it, 222? Another learning opportunity, so rejuvenate. Rejuvenate is a learning conference that we have offered. This year was supposed to be our big 10-year anniversary. It's a learning conference that we offer to pre-K 8 staff members. Typically, it's been held at the convention center, and we offer concurrent sessions for folks to sign up for. It's an optional learning session. Typically, we'd have anywhere between 200 and 300 teachers register for this opportunity. Given the current situation, we had postponed that and said we were going to not do it until next year and have the 10-year celebration. However, we really began to reflect from a climate and culture and a social-emotional standpoint how important it was to get strategies in the hands of our educators when we think about things like culturally relevant and responsive practices, trauma-informed care, how empathy is going to play such a huge role in making connections over these next several weeks with our families, our staff, and our students. So we offered 21 different concurrent sessions, as you can see. This was, of course, the week of the storm, so some people had power issues. We did have 198 folks registered. The one thing that I just wanted to point out is we did offer an on-demand option. This was also when summer school was still taking place. So now, almost every session has a recorded session, as well as all the presentation materials have been made available to all of our staff here at Hampton City Schools. Climate coach training also took place this summer. That took place on August 10th. Each of our buildings have a climate coach that is a teacher, a counselor, a staff member in the building who helps to promote the work of climate and culture. Again, at our high schools, we have two because of the sheer volume. So they come out for training, and we provide them with the latest research on how they can promote social-emotional learning, climate and culture, and community building. You can see those key areas we really focused on in a virtual space. What we are trying to equip our staff members with more than anything is for them to realize the importance of creating community, connection, and consistency. Those are going to be the top non-negotiables as we think about this re-engagement and re-entry. And we also talked about those tier-one behavior supports, and we provided them resources for how you can do that in a virtual setting. And then also knowing that we need to have a comprehensive system of care. So Ms. Tiffany Hardy and her department came up with an amazing resource to help them think about protocols for young people that may be having difficulty as they re-engage, or how we can provide wraparound supports for our students and families. The last piece I want to share with you is a pilot opportunity that we created. On August 12th, we created an opportunity for K through 5 teachers, where each grade level had a virtual session. Each teacher that decided to join the exchange brought a social-emotional learning activity they could use in a virtual space, and they came together. And it was teachers with teachers exchanging ideas. The feedback so far has been amazing. The teachers really liked the idea to be in an informal space to share those ideas and then brainstorm other ideas. So all of the participants walked away with each other's activities that they can go right into their classroom spaces to be able to implement.
All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Dr. Ken Richardson, who will also share some, an overview of some of the training that has taken place and will take place for both faculty and administrators. Dr. Richardson?
Good evening, Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Woodhouse, members of the board, Dr. Smith. Thank you very much. We're very excited about the opportunities that we have. A lot of the work that Heather has just introduced has come out of an emergence of the professional development needs that arose during the COVID closure. So I want to begin with our mentorship and supervision. We had about 85 to 90 brand-new teachers who in COVID did not have the opportunity, of course, to finish out their very first year of teaching, but mentoring continued. So we were very excited about the opportunity that was presented in the fact that we had mentors that mentored in a virtual space, and that collaboration and partnership still continued. So we did conduct virtual mentorship and supervision training. This training is also for teachers that decide to host a university student who is doing a practicum or student teaching experience. We were able to provide training to over 75 educators in our June, July, and August virtual sessions. We do have a face-to-face with physical distancing and masks session on Monday. And our topics include the why behind teacher retention and to make the connection to induction, and to help teachers understand what the research says about being able to support our new teachers. We have to understand the phases that they go through during their first year and what support structures and strategies match those. We want our mentors and supervising teachers to be able to provide differentiated feedback, and of course, with the foundation of building relationships. And all of the training, while it was overarching for principals, we also embedded the components to be able to think about virtual mentoring. We were very excited about the leadership opportunities that arose as well. Our teachers that are serving in teacher leadership roles outside of the classroom, such as coaches, specialists, coordinators, participated. At first, in a makeup session, we were just about to have a coaching training session occur right at the end of closure, but then it turned into this weekly opportunity for us to come together, similar to the cell exchange, and to talk strategy. But we also had to put the mask on ourselves first. So I designed a series called Leadership During Uncertain Times, and it covered topics such as working from home and working through uncontrollable circumstances and building optimism and resilience. And I'm very proud to say that this series was nationally recognized. And I did a presentation with Jim Knight recently to talk about what we're doing in Hampton City Schools and supporting leadership development. Also, I had the opportunity to share with building and district leaders during the recent summit some strategies for building our teachers and growing our leaders during this virtual space. Finally, we had leadership opportunities because our fourth-year teachers, I stood before this group in 1617 when I first got into this position, and our fifth-year teachers are now that group that have gone all the way through our five-year induction plan. So they are actually participating in the second year of our teacher leadership series. But we also had the opportunity to provide professional development for purposeful planning PD, which was done virtually, and also to consider virtual components. And we discuss adult learning, professional learning, lesson planning, and we have to consider that adult brain and their needs. Sorry, I jumped the gun on that. So this is the slide for my teacher leadership. I do apologize. I'm very excited about the fact that I have been able to watch teachers be entering the profession, and now they are stretching out their wings and flying into various leadership roles in their school and at the division level. So our fourth and fifth-year teachers are moving from induction, learning how to teach, to learning how to lead. And how we define leadership is not a role or a position, but having that mindset about all children, all hands on deck, doing what we need to do for our schools. So some of those topics that we present to our teachers are relationship trust, being able to communicate when failure happens in communication, and leading those change efforts that we know are necessary to impact student improvement. Finally, we are in the middle of our coach boot camp when our Heather's climate coaches need specific coaching training, those very specialized positions where we know that the ability to have a conversation that is a partnership that should embed goals and action planning. So we held a coach boot camp where we discussed the teacher leadership competencies of mentorship and coaching, the norms of collaboration, and the communication skills of trust, committed listening, powerful speaking, and questioning. And again, all of this professional development was provided virtually. We have asynchronous opportunities for our teachers to read and participate in studies or in little mini article reads. So I just listed some of those there. They were available in the summer playbook so that teachers could take advantage of the asynchronous opportunities that were available. And those are some of our book titles that we have. I designed certain work documents to help a teacher feel guidance and support in a, in a way that they could do this on their own and participate in a reading, but still have some accountability there as they are participating in this study. So those are some of the titles that we have done that for. I'm very excited about the 150, I'm counting right now, 153, 130 teachers that we have hired to date. We are in the middle of day three of our orientation, which is being done virtually. Many of you saw the pictures on Facebook from our drive-through meet and greet. Well, we were just letting our new hires know how much we appreciate them joining our family. We had some pre-orientation chats to help lower the jitters for those that were not sure what this work was going to look like with the year that we were having, and to let them know how orientation would work. And as I mentioned, we have six very robust days of virtual learning. There are breaks, there are opportunities to discuss and talk. And what's really exciting is one teacher said today, "Wow, is this what students are going to feel like? I want to make sure that my lessons are engaging. I want to make sure that they have the opportunity to make their learning meaningful." So we're very excited, and as I mentioned earlier, we're going to be passing the baton from our office over to curriculum and instruction. So our teachers will be diving into lesson planning and UBD, understanding by design, and working and spending time with their curriculum leaders. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Richardson. At this time, we'll turn the presentation over to Kate Maxlow. She is our Coordinator of Innovation and Professional Learning. And joining Ms. Maxlow this evening are two of our digital learning specialists, Jen Thomason and Beth Horn. Ms. Maxlow?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. We are very excited to discuss some of the updates from our innovation and professional learning department regarding all the summer training and professional development that we have been doing. Dr. Caggianno already mentioned that I have two of our fabulous digital learning specialists with us, and so I am actually going to turn it over at this time to Beth Horn.
We have offered optional numerous trainings this summer to help teachers prepare for a virtual start for students. We began many of these trainings back in March and have continued to offer them frequently throughout the summer, both as live Zoom meetings and as self-paced modules in the Cyber Learning Cafe, which we're going to look at a little bit later. Each training was chosen as something that would increase student engagement and/or equity with digital learning. We have been thrilled with the number of teachers who have chosen to learn and grow with us this summer. We've had a great time interacting with so many of our HCS colleagues, both during the trainings themselves and discussing their reactions on Twitter. These are just a few of the tweets that we received over the summer. In addition to the optional trainings that we have done, we want our teachers to feel completely prepared to start the year virtually. We have some of the best and the brightest students and staff, and we have been excited to work with all the teachers on the following modules: Using Google Classroom Effectively; Teaching on Zoom; Engaging Online Instruction with Google Slides; Virtual Classroom Management; and Using Google Calendar to Keep Organized.
And now we will turn it over to Jennifer Thomason.
Thank you. We knew that many of our teachers already had the skills that were in the required training modules, so we wanted to ensure that we were meeting the needs of all adult learners. So that, so saying that, we actually, teachers were not required to sit through a PD if they could send in a product demonstrating that they already had those skills. Meanwhile, for those teachers who were not as comfortable with technology, we had a ton of resources and live Zoom learning sessions available. We also have an IPL help desk where teachers can come and get one-on-one lessons anytime they need it, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday. One of the other things that sets Hampton apart is that we didn't simply have teachers sit through training to complete a module. They have to turn in a product that demonstrates how they can apply the skills. This helps to ensure that they will retain any new knowledge and be able to use it more fluidly once students arrive in September. Doing the modules in Google Classroom has also helped us to develop relationships with teachers. When they turn in work, digital learning specialists assigned to that classroom reviews the work for completion and provides feedback as needed. Teachers are able to ask questions and grow their skills through the use of this personalized feedback. And here you can see some of those responses. Another important delivery of our training is our Cyber Learning Cafe. Throughout the summer, our department has worked to update the Cyber Learning Cafe to be more user-friendly and intuitive to navigate. Teachers can log on to the completely free resources anytime they want to complete even more technology training at their own pace, earning licensure renewal points in the process. It is important to note that each of these training sessions also requires teachers to create a product that they can use in their everyday work. These products are again reviewed and feedback is given to help teachers grow.
The next slide, please. So when it comes to statistics, these are our numbers. They are as of Friday, August fourteenth. And so we are just beyond impressed with the number of teachers who have worked so hard to get these required training modules done during the summer. Teachers who are unable to complete them over the summer, that's that's just fine. They'll have until August thirty-first to complete them. Pre-service starts on August twenty-sixth. And moreover, I really need to give a sincere thank you to the digital learning specialists who have spent hours and hours grading all of these assignments, checking them for completion, providing personalized feedback that we believe is going to help Hampton have just a truly amazing virtual learning program. So we also recognize that online pedagogy is not the same as in-person pedagogy. And so we have had great success in the past with our in-person teaching with our instructional technique library. So we've also created an online instructional technique library. We have worked with all of the curriculum leaders and teacher specialists in order to come up with some instructional techniques that really make online lessons stand out and make them super engaging and relevant for students. And so these techniques are going to be used in the lessons that we're creating for students in grades K through eight for the core content areas. And just to give you an example, this is what one of the strategies gamification looks like. We have some opportunities to do some really exciting things, such as puzzle quests, breakout rooms, escape rooms, role-playing games, et cetera. A lot of people like to say that virtual learning is not as good as in-person learning, and that's simply not true. Virtual learning is different, and it can be absolutely as engaging. And in fact, it allows you to do some things that you sometimes can't do in person. So we are really excited about this online instructional technique library. And additionally, we are going to be providing traditional, our traditional understanding by design and social emotional learning modules. And so those are always in conjunction with Heather Peterson. We're going to do those during pre-service, and we're going to really focus on that system's approach for social emotional learning, but also best practices in digital learning, grading, using all the new technology equipment, and most importantly, using technology to maintain open lines of communication with students and families. And we're going to focus really on modifying the instruction for that virtual environment. And we know, and our curriculum leaders are super on top of this, but addressing any learning gaps that were created during the pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. Maxlow. As Dr. Smith mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we've also had some time to meet with building administrators and central office administrators, really as a large group, both in June and in August. And so the most recent training held over the days of August third and fourth, our August Leadership Summit. And Dr. Smith kicked that off for all administrators. And the title of the presentation, you can see there, One Division, One Transformation, Reimagining Teaching and Learning. So really, Dr. Smith's presentation is setting the stage for what will look similar, what will look different, as some of the information you've heard this evening, and the importance of, again, maintaining open lines of communication, customer service, and the expectations of still meeting and living out the really the mission of this school division, every child, every day, whatever it takes in collaboration with the community. Some of the other topics you can see there, everything from social emotional learning. We had Dr. Bruce Copeland and members of his team present, Ms. Heather Peterson, some of the information she shared this evening. Special education updates with Ms. Kim Judge, Dr. Richardson, and Ms. Maxlow and her team had the opportunity to also get in front of our administrators. And curriculum leaders, particularly in the areas of English, mathematics, and science, had the opportunity to meet by level, so elementary, middle, and high, and share some of the things that they have been doing with revisions to curriculum, for example, to address learning loss. So some of those foundational skills, let's say, in second-grade math, how can I, as a third-grade math teacher, be assured that my students have that foundation? So we've built some of those significant, or what we've referred to as power standards, into the third-grade curriculum and some different checks for understanding to address some of the learning loss, which we know has happened. Our Executive Directors of School Leadership, Dr. Owens and Dr. Haynes, had the chance for breakout sessions to meet with their respective levels of principals. We again got into some health mitigation strategies with Nurse Gill. John Eagle provided information on that internet program and MiFi's at Cox Connect to Compete. And then lastly, Ms. Ruth, Dr. Bowling, and myself continued to provide the team with updates regarding our return to school. So this does conclude this presentation. At this time, any of the members of the team would be happy to respond to any questions. So Mr. Kilgore, I'll go ahead and turn the meeting back over to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Caggiarno, and to all the presenters that presented this evening. Excellent presentation. Do I have any questions or comments from board members? Yes, or Mr. Samuels.
Thank you, Chairman Kilgore. I have a question for Dr. Richardson. She mentioned that there were eight of five to ninety new teachers that participated in the program of virtual learning. Are these teachers that were from last school year that did not participate? Or are these brand-new teachers coming on board this fiscal year?
So this year, our new teacher numbers, I want to say it's about sixty. It's almost about half. And then last year, our new teacher group is about eighty strong. We actually also have thirteen teachers that were hired after the January one timeframe that we rolled this year's new teacher group. So there are another thirteen teachers. So as far as brand-new, new to the profession, or they were coming from a private school or college experience, it is about sixty.
And Dr. Richardson, I believe, and Mr. Samuels, were you asking, Dr. Richardson, at one point, you were commenting on those new teachers who did not get the chance to finish out the school year.
Oh.
I think that's what Mr. Samuels was referencing.
Correct, John. Correct, Dr. Caggiarno.
Yes, that number is, and I have it here. Yes, it's about eighty-five of those teachers. I do not have the exact number of how many may not still be with us, but that number, no, it's a little more. It was about a hundred and ten. That number does not, does include the thirteen that were hired late. So they are rolling over. And I really want to say only about, I would say less than ten of those, and I'm sorry, I don't have that that exact number, are no longer with us. And those are not all new hires. That was just new to the profession because those are the teachers that we continue to work with throughout the year. I hope that answers the question.
And second question, and this is also for Dr. Richardson. I am excited about that training that you did as it relates to leadership through uncertain times. That is so exciting, as you know, that we're going through some uncertain times with this COVID nineteen. And I want to know if that particular training will be available to the board members.
I can jump in if you want, Miss Dr. Richardson, on that one and say,
Yes, Doc.
We'll leave that to the school board chair and the board and certainly make it available upon request. I know, Dr. Richardson, you will respond the same way, so sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. Any other comments or questions from board members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Cherry.
Yes, my comment actually is an observation for Nurse Gill. And in her presentation, Nurse Gill, you talked about, if she's still here.
I am.
Okay, great. You talked about the cloth face mask that will soon be here that are on order for our students. And I think it's important to point out, and I want to make sure this is accurate, that once they receive those masks, each one of our students who gets one, the mask will have the emblem or the logo of their own individual school, because I think that speaks volumes to the pride and ownership. So is that accurate?
You are accurate. That, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, and it, and primarily so that they would want to wear it because it's unique to their school. So it's, it's going to be, I think, a unique piece for them to wear as well. So yes, you're correct in saying that.
Yeah, I think that was a very good marketing strategy because of everybody's part. And I think it speaks volumes to that ownership piece. And I'm probably less likely as a student to lose or play loose with my mask if I know that it identifies me with my own school.
Correct.
That's brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. Dr. Mason?
Yes, just a couple of comments. Kudos to Heather Peterson. It's always great to hear about the wonderful things you guys are doing on that end and to hear the things that are happening with the trauma for students and adults, you know, centering around what we're dealing with right now. I get calls daily in regards to helping parents work through certain situations with their kids. And then, of course, they jump right in and say, I need some help too, you know? So it's great to see that as a school division, we are providing those resources. So once again, kudos to you and your team. Looking at the information that Dr. Richardson talked about, congratulations on the national recognition for the leadership piece. You know, that speaks volumes to Hampton City Schools. And your comment about leadership being a mindset and not a position is so accurate. And I think that's where, as a division, we are leaps and bounds ahead of so many people. I just enjoy bragging on Hampton City Schools and the leadership, you know, and not just the position, like you said, but with our, our teachers and our classroom folks that are doing these things every day, you know, it speaks volumes. And I just love the cyber learning cafe, you know, that, that also continues to add to the teaching and the learning, you know, process for what we're doing. So great job in terms of what we're doing. And I think as a division, we are going to make great changes with this online platform and this virtual learning this year. You know, we were all kind of thrown into the deep end of the pool at all levels. And I, I think that once we got a handle on things, you know, we jumped right on in and did what Hampton City Schools normally would do, and that's rise to the top. So kudos to you all for putting all of this together and the hard work because I know you had some sleepless nights working on a lot of this stuff. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Any other comments or questions for the presenters?
Ms. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one question. It's for Dr. Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. You know, at the last meeting, how you doing, Dr. Smith?
I'm doing well, Ms. Cherry.
Good to see you.
Likewise.
At the last meeting, we talked about that repository of resources. Where are we on that expansion when it comes to things like childcare and information for our parents?
Absolutely. Currently, as a matter of fact, on Thursday, following the last board meeting, we started to develop that resource for the community and would expect, I think, within the next week or so, to reach out to board members to provide us with additional information. So we will share with you individually the development, the product, and then ask individual board members to offer suggestions to enhance. But we have a member of the division leadership team leading that work, and we're well on our way.
Okay. Thank you so much for your attention to that.
No, and thank you. It was an excellent suggestion and idea. So we're moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. I'd like to thank Ms. Gill, Dr. Caggiarno, Ms. Peterson, Dr. Richardson, Ms. Maxlow, Ms. Thomason, and Ms. Horn for the excellent information this evening. I did want to circle back to something Ms. Maxlow said, which really jumped off the page at me, which is that engaging online learning can be just as effective as in person. And I think that's really important to say as we get ready to return to school virtually and that there are some things that can be done virtually that you can't do in person that are engaging. So thank you very much for that positive enforcement about virtual learning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Dr. Smith, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would ask Ms. Robin Ruth, our Executive Director for Human Resources, to share and provide a staffing update.
Good evening, everyone. I, since our last school board meeting a couple of weeks ago, we have hired sixteen teachers. So we're very excited about that. As I shared with you last week, we had, or a couple of weeks ago, we had twenty-nine openings. We've shared, or we've hired sixteen teachers. Unfortunately, we've also had eleven resignations. And so, so our numbers are about the same. We are still at ninety-eight percent staffed. The, the reasons for folks leaving this late in the game, we've had a number of people who have been promoted into other positions outside of the classroom and not necessarily in Hampton. They're leaving education for private industry. We've had three of those in the last week. And also, the military is starting to relocate folks again. So we've got several folks who spouses are in the military and have been given orders. So we are still at a ninety-eight percent staffed. Over the last week, though, Suzanne Marcela and I have met with every administrative team in each of our school buildings, and we have developed plans for coverage for all of our, our classrooms in the event that we are not able to hire someone for some of our vacancies. And we're pretty excited about some creative solutions that we've got. Well, we've got some teachers who will be teaching students in multiple schools. We're taking, again, things that we can take advantage of in a virtual setting that we would not be able to, to do if we were having face-to-face instructions. So even though it's a challenging time, it is really giving us an opportunity to be creative and do some out-of-box things for our students. So we are excited. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Do we have any questions from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, I have one quick question for Ms. Ruth.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that report, Ms. Ruth. I have one quick question. And that is, as we look at going into a virtual learning environment, I think it's obvious that there are some positions that we have within the school division that work more closely with students in person. So if we were looking at down the road or pretty much immediately having to even think of the word furlough, which I don't even want to mention, is there a plan for that? And how soon would people know where they stand in relationship to that position?
Okay. So long as our funding remains the same, we do not have any plans for furloughs at this point in time. We have been working very hard to identify alternate assignments for all of our employees. Again, during those, the meetings that we've held over the last week with administrators, we have identified assignments for everyone within school buildings. And we have a team of folks who, again, has come up with some really creative ideas that will benefit our students and our families. Not sure we're quite ready to share what those are, but we do have alternate assignments. If not for everybody right today, we will by the time school starts. So again, a lot of creative thinking going on.
That is great news. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Cherry. That is great news. Any other questions of Ms. Ruth? All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Ruth.
Thank you.
We're going to come back to you here shortly.
Yes, sir.
That concludes it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We now move on to the hearing of any delegations or presentations. Ms. Bowers, do we have anyone this evening?
No, we do not.
All right. Thank you very much. We now move on to deliberation. And currently this evening, we have five items on deliberation. And I'm going to group a couple of them. And I'm going to group a couple of them as we go through this, just for, so people can talk to them. Deliberation item five point zero one and five point zero three are policies GB, AB and JHGB. Let me get that right. Yes, which are the discrimination and harassment policies. Do we have any comments or questions deliberative about those? Anyone? I know Ms. Ruth is ready. Okay, then I'll move on to deliberation item five point zero two, which should be fairly simple because it's deletion of school board policy GB, ABR, tat, dash, R. All right. Then we have deliberation item five point zero four, revision of school board policy GCBDA, sick leave. Have any deliberation on that policy? Yes, Mr. Samuels?
No, I just have a comment in regards to the conversation I had at last board meeting with Ms. Robin Ruth. I just want to applaud her for reaching out and we will continue to have further conversation as it relates to some language change to continue to support our staff. So I just want to applaud Ms. Robin Ruth for, you know, doing her research and ensuring that, you know, we continue to, to, to support our staff. So Ms. Ms. Ruth, thank you so much for that, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Samuels. And our final item on deliberation is deliberation item five point zero five, revision of school board policy EFB, food services. Any comments, questions? Hearing none. I believe we have a request from the staff to move items five point zero one and five point zero three to action. Is that correct, Ms. Ruth?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
In addition, we, uh, Mr. Chairman, in addition, you should go ahead and delete the five point zero two at the same time.
Very good, okay. So do I have a motion to move items five point zero one through five point zero three to action this evening?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Second.
I have a motion from Dr. Mason and a second from, I believe, Dr. Woodhouse. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Bowers, will you take the vote?
Ms. Cherry? Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, motion carries. So we now have some action items to vote on or to deal with. So if it pleases the board, we can take this as a block if somebody would like to make a motion.
Mr. Chair? That we take action, item number five point zero one, five point zero two and five point zero three as a block for action.
I'll just for clarification, there actually becomes six point zero one through six point zero three on the action agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Ms. Cherry and a second by Mr. Samuels, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Bowers, will you please call for the vote?
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye, motion passes. And just again to thank Ms. Ruth and the team of people that worked on development of these policies, they are broad in scope and significant in detail, and I wish you well.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now we will move on to deliberation items first read.
Yes.
Good evening, Chair Kilgore, Vice Chair Woodhouse, members of the board, Dr. Smith and our HCS family. I have several policies to share with you for first read this evening, and I will start with policy JHFD listed in the chart. And this has a small change, which comes about because of our new student code of conduct. And several of these policies, you will see, we are starting to map, model that language. And so the first one, it is a minor change, but we are taking out the reference to the Hampton Police Department, because that is something that as a school, we are not dealing with in governing. And so you'll see that change in JHFD. In the next policy, I have it JGDAA, and that policy has formerly been called student suspension makeup work. And we are changing the title of that from suspension, because we allow makeup work for various reasons throughout the school year. And also, we are changing that to show that the teacher would have direct access to communicating that work. Prior to that, it had gone through administration and there was a longer process. So now we do not have that process in place, we want students to have that makeup work available. The next policy, JIA, student recognitions, this is just a review. It says no suggested changes. You will see in the policy that we actually did take out the shals to make wills. That's part of the VSB policy, and we've tried to do that with policies as we've updated those. The next policy, JG, teacher removal of students from an instructional setting. This is a policy title change also, before the word discipline was in, in that title. And so this policy title now matches VSB. And also, the reference to corporal punishment was taken out of that, we have that as part of other policies. And based on our student code of conduct, the language is just changed to better match that. The next policy, IJ, guidance and counseling program. These changes are minor, and they recommend a more specific process for a parent choosing not to want to participate in counseling opportunities offered to their child. So Ms. Mon, our Director of Counseling, asked that that be in writing henceforth for the parent, so that there wouldn't be any concern as to the status of that permission. The next policy, JECA, admission of resident children. There was a slight code change in that, so that is the update that you will see on that policy. JFCI, student drug abuse. Again, this is reflective of our student code of conduct, we are not having category offenses. So the offense is now a level four, and that just matches up with our code of conduct. JFCL is search and seizure policy, and again, some updates for the student code of conduct and to better align with VSB policy. And those are my first reads for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Hatcher. Just a reminder to board members, these are on first read, not up for deliberation, but they are open for any questions of clarification. Do I have any board members that want to ask any questions of clarification? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Hatcher, I, we look forward to deliberating those at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to informational items. Real quick, I will, I will say that our next board meeting is actually our annual retreat next Wednesday, August twenty-sixth, that will be at One Franklin Street in the downstairs conference room. And then our next regular meeting will be the first Wednesday in September, September second. And that may be at the Jones Forum, maybe virtual like this meeting again, that is yet to be determined. So anyway, do I have any informational items from Dr. Smith?
No further business, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any informational items from my fellow board members? All right, hearing none. Everyone have a wonderful and wonderful evening and stay safe, and I look forward to seeing you again soon.